Deanna Perry with Tri Delta Transit.
Hello, Peter Enkel, CCTA.
Hello, Jahan, CCTA.
Joanna Pollak, WIC Tech staff.
So you'll notice in your packet that you have a meeting schedule. However, we're looking at the pot, let me just find it. Meeting schedule, here it is. Page 2-1. And we're looking at the possibility of having a meeting on June 17th. As an opportunity to review the Richmond claim. So if you could all put that on your calendars and if you, people have, because we would like to make sure we have a quorum for that. If, but it's a tentative because we have to make sure everything's ready for it. So is there anybody here who could not meet on June 17th? Does everybody here have access?
I will not be here, but we'll send either Kim or Laura.
Okay. And so you'll for sure have an alternate here. Okay. And everybody else can be here then? Okay. So then hopefully one of the operators who are enjoying the heat elsewhere will be able to join us.
Yeah, just to add to that, so it's the third Monday, which is our regular on the month schedule. It's just an off month. So hopefully that makes it easier for everybody. And if we don't get a quorum, so we did have a quorum today, but somebody hasn't shown up, which has taken us under. Which means unless they show up, we won't be able to take on these action items. So we would potentially then for sure have that meeting in June. So we could approve all these items.
Okay.
And I'll get more into it when we get to the, well, we're not going to get to the items potentially. So let me say now. Because there's typically what we would do is approve all the claims and then those would go to the planning committee in June and the board in June for July 1st. If we push that off till June 17th, then they would go in July. I think from the perspective of the agencies getting their money, it won't make a difference because there's always a lag for that first payment anyway. Because we have to get the POs all in order and all that stuff. So we would just speed up that process to potentially get them out at the same time as whether we approve this stuff in June or not. So I don't think it would make a real difference from that perspective. So.
Okay. Any comments or any, yeah, any comments in particular about the schedule? Everybody okay? Great. Okay, so moving on. Just looking to see what else we can do right now.
We can do item 7, which is a Richmond update.
Okay. Richmond. Would you like to give an update, please?
Sure. So what I have in front of me, and I'm going to pass this around and I'll bring more on in June when we have our next meeting. This is our, this is a letter that's being sent out to all of our clients. As of May 27th, May 27th, we will be sending this out round two. This is round two of this letter. And it pretty much helps our existing clients and any potential new clients to understand the Lyft service and to understand how to register for a ride. It goes into the service hours, the method of payment, of course, our service area, and then the trip, the new trip cost. And the maximum number of trips, you know, through the Lyft service. On page three of this, of this letter, you'll find the, it's kind of like a flow chart of how the program works from the inception of actually, you know, signing up with Lyft and then all the way through completion. If you are ambulatory and non-ambulatory, how that service works. And so our clients are, the existing ones are getting this so they understand how we're shifting from some of our service to Lyft. And then for wheelchair and disabled clients who are wheelchair, whether it's power wheelchair or a, you know, a manual wheelchair. We're just kind of giving them information in terms of where we are, of our continued city service. In regards to some of the efforts that we're, you know, making or strides that we're making to improve our service. We are, we have three contracts that are currently being reviewed now. We will be, we will be review, interviewing transportation firms next Thursday. And we've asked those firms to bring their vehicles so we can also do a trip, you know, destination, kind of feel how their vehicles ride. See what they, you know, how they're, how they, how they look inside, if they're comfortable, just pretty much how that works. And particularly, we looked into this program for power wheelchair clients. And we hope to award two separate contracts. One would be for a citywide shuttle service for anyone. And then the other one would be specifically tailored to pair transit.
Anyone?
Ambulatory and non-ambulatory service. And it's just to help us with, you know, whatever type of, I guess, challenges that we may deal with. I'm not foreseeing any challenges with Lyft. There have been some challenges that we've heard about in terms of, you know, having a, you know, a smartphone or not having a smartphone. There have been other challenges we've heard about and we talked about this in our subcommittee meeting or these subcommittee meetings. There were several questions that were raised in terms of, you know, how the program is really going to roll out, you know, in terms of if you need to have a credit card or a debit card or, you know. There were numerous questions, but we want to make sure that the service that we have, any additional service that we address all those. I recently heard from someone, staff at WIC Tech, and Joanna may want to come up and kind of elaborate, I'm not sure. But she was sharing of, sharing how she recently attended a, an event and how that just seems to be a challenge overall in terms of, you know, people with this new shift of transportation. Individuals who don't have smartphones or who don't have credit cards and don't feel comfortable with using credit cards. And that's a challenge, you know, nationwide, but particularly since she was here definitely in California. So as we start this program, we, you know, we have encountered some questions about that. We may find that that may be a more challenging in the future, but this is how we're moving now. And I think that what we'll have to do is kind of, you know, get through those challenges by figuring out as we start this program, how we best mitigate that. And that may be a conversation statewide, it may be a conversation with just all transit providers. I don't know how it's going to do, we're certainly going to reach out to see how others are performing and what they're doing to overcome this. But that's our program so far. We came a long ways. I think in 2016, 17, we started talking about this, how we're going to roll this out. We started talking about our challenges with our pair transit service. And we were trying to think about different providers that we had to work through the union contracts. Then we got to 17, 18, and we started still, there was still discussion about who was going to be on our staff. And as that transition kind of phased out with staff leaving or retiring, we then began to have conversation with Lyft in 18, 19. And here we are right now. And so I was hoping to start this back in 17, 18, when we first started talking about it. But there's been some baby steps, there's some giant steps we've had to take. There's been some setbacks here and there, but nonetheless, we are here and we are hoping to commence this service sometime in June, July of 2019, not 2020 or '21, you know. So I'm hoping that's where we end up at and I will continue to report out, hopefully, Peter, every time we have these meetings, just to kind of give an update. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question about your, the chart on the page two of your sound out.
Sure. Let me put my glasses on. But go ahead, ask some questions.
Thank you for the color, it makes it easy to describe anything.
You're welcome.
I'll wait for your glasses. I bet you can answer it without glasses. So it says, "Able to fold and store my wheelchair onboard without the assistance of drivers." It keeps going, but the question I had was, is that assuming the wheelchair user is able to do that? Or?
Well, the wheelchair user, sometimes they have assistants. And so, you know, right now.
Assuming they didn't have an assistant, would that mean that the wheelchair user would have to be able to do it themselves?
Well, I'm sure there are cases, and we've asked Lyft about this, there are cases where a driver could help. But we would encourage our patrons to have an assistant or have someone there that can assist them.
But assuming they don't, because that may just be the way it is. The, do the pink box, are the pink boxes?
Let me give you an example. It's just like if I.
Let me just finish my question first. The question I had was, is the stuff in pink, the people, the Lyft route and the blue is the R Transit route? Is that what that means?
Correct.
Okay. So what it's saying in the pink, in that first pink box is that the Lyft driver is not going to be responsible for getting the wheelchair onboard or folding and storing it. Right?
Well, that's correct to a certain extent. And I was, where I was going with that, the answer to your question was, it's just like if I'm going to an airport, this is probably a bad example. And I have suitcases. I've had Lyft drivers and Uber drivers to help me put those suitcases in the vehicle. Although not required, Lyft has shared with us that if someone has a wheelchair that's foldable, the driver will assist, but that's not written in our contract.
Okay, but that's, that sort of basically excludes the whole category of people in wheelchairs then?
We didn't want to exclude people in wheelchairs and that's why we had, if the wheelchair patron, if the ambulatory patron or passenger would like to take Lyft, they're able to do that. Or they can continue to use our service where they will get those, the help of a driver.
No, but isn't the pink box about people in wheelchairs, manual wheelchairs?
It's about people with, whoever is able to take Lyft, whether you're in manual wheelchair or you are non-ambulatory, I mean ambulatory.
Well, it doesn't exactly read it that way. It reads that that's about a, I mean, to do the thing that it says here, you have to have a wheelchair around, you know.
I'm sorry.
The wheelchair is part of that box. So it kind of looks like it would exclude almost everybody in a wheelchair traveling independently, but anyway.
No, we, this is for the patrons who don't have a power wheelchair but would like to take Lyft and who have, and whose wheelchairs are able to fit into a vehicle because Lyft don't have the, they don't have the vans.
Right. But the, but it's saying that the person in the wheelchair needs to be able to do these things. Most of the people I know can't if they're in that category. But anyway, let me, let me just let that go and then move on and see if there are other questions. You were asking if there are questions, right? So does anybody else have questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a couple of comments. We also encountered the issue with people not wanting to give their credit cards. You know, they have smartphones, they know how to use the app, but they don't feel comfortable giving credit cards. I had a passenger tell me there are Uber and Lyft gift cards. So you could actually buy them and load them. So if they don't feel comfortable doing that, or if it's like an older person that might have a daughter or a family member that's overseeing their money, their accounts, they might want to give them the Uber Lyft card that they could load to the app. And then that way they can reload the card and not have to worry about a credit card and give them an allowance to use for Uber Lyft. So that might be something that you want to look into. I also wanted to tell you that I just found out from our planning and grants coordinator that because of some NTD reporting, to be in compliance with that, we have to now shift towards shared ride with Uber and Lyft. They're still looking into that. We are going to have to send out about, you know, 1,200 letters or so for everyone who signed up in our program to let them know that we are going to have to go to shared ride in order for them to get the discount. Right now, as it is, it's basically you go to the app and it pulls up just a regular ride, not a shared ride. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the person can only take a ride if a shared ride is available because it depends on how many Lyft and Uber drivers are logged in to work at the moment they're requesting the ride. But we have to at least say that we're trying to make it a shared ride. So that's going to change things a bit, so just be prepared for that.
And in our first round of, well, when we were first notifying the patrons or customers, we were telling them that the shared ride is what they really would want to take to save costs. Because their costs would be, it would be higher, slightly higher if they did not share a ride. It's just like with our current pair transit service, we pick up more than one patron, you know, to take them to their destination. So you and I discussed that last time, so I appreciate that, the recap of that. Thank you.
Is the requirement because of federal money that you get?
From what I'm understanding, yes, it is.
Because in this case, I don't know that there's any federal money, in Richmond's case, I mean.
No.
You may not have that restriction.
It's not that, no, that's not a restriction for us, but we were looking at saving the patron cost because, you know, and so. So we encouraged them to take your shared ride.
You would do it for your own reason.
For ride, yes.
Thank you though. Okay, other?
I'm just curious, so in a shared ride situation, each TNC user still has to pay the $3 base. And then the cost to City of Richmond or Tri Delta then is reduced because it's a shared ride beyond $3. So the subsidy would purportedly be less.
Yes.
And how do they invoice you and what kind of records do they provide you?
Well, we have a contract with them. And so I guess every monthly, they would invoice the city and they would give us all the pertinent information in terms of the number of trips that were taken, you know, where they traveled, how many passengers traveled within that monthly timeframe.
But you haven't seen anything yet.
We haven't had the commiss service yet.
They haven't started.
So they haven't started, so how do they invoice you?
We, let's see, I have not seen an Uber invoice yet. Uber would not send one, under my understanding, unless it hit 10,000. Lyft sends one monthly. It's a little hard to read. That usually passes through me very quickly, goes to accounting. So we get that monthly and then United Taxi, we get monthly as well.
And we don't contract out with Uber, they have a different process, but you are right, Deanna, it would be a monthly billing statement that the city would receive. And again, in that billing statement, they'll have the breakdown of the number of rides, what the costs were, what the city's subsidy is. And they would have already taken it from the patron, but that's the breakdown of it. And then possibly how many no-shows there are. Because for no-shows, we still get charged and we're trying to mitigate that because, you know, sometimes, you know, seniors, well, I think the advantage of it is that we may have limited no-shows now and limited cancellations. Because before you, shortly before you have a doctor's appointment or any appointment, you're going to call in if you don't feel that good that day or something comes up, you don't, you never have to call for a ride. So that's going to definitely reduce our no-shows and cancellations.
Other questions?
Please.
Are you interested in hearing feedback about the actual draft of this letter or is this like a done deal?
No, 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 I would love to, just sort of pass it in around.
So the, I would just want to say that the schematic on the back or the last page of it, I really appreciate the visual nature of it because I know that that works a lot better for many people. And some, and some suggestions I have around it, it still is very word heavy. It's hard for my eyeballs to read, so if it could be bigger, I think that'd be helpful for a lot of us. But also I think it would be helpful too, in addition to the colors that you've used, to add additional icons. Maybe just on this side, you know, the Lyft logo and on the other side, the R Transit to further clarify that those are the two branches we're talking about. And perhaps in some way, some sort of icons to indicate that the blue side over here are for folks with power wheelchairs. And maybe visually impaired on the other side, maybe some sort of icons to indicate, you know, ambulatory people, people using a walker, you know, those kinds of things to make it more useful for a wider audience.
Got you. Thank you. You know what, I just noticed. Peter?
I just wanted to say, Lori, as hard as it is, because I know everybody's really busy, if you could document this journey.
Okay.
I mean, you, I mean, Tri Delta is one agency. You guys are a different agency with different issues regarding, you previously had your, and are still integrating this with your current service. And, you know, your labor issues that have occurred. And, you know, you could be at Nashville right now presenting your journey to a group of other cities and operators that are going, how did you get there? How did you get there with Lyft? So I think it's, you know, really good to, as a lesson's learned, and how you, you know, it's been, it's been a long path, but you've also learned a lot that would be very helpful to other people.
Okay, great, thank you. That, that I would take into consideration and definitely work on. Thank you.
And who knows, could she maybe even get some funding through some grant thing that would be connected to her journey? Or to?
Possibly.
You know? Do you have your hand up?
Joanna said, "I got money."
You can make a comment as a member of the public. No. But we need to hear you. I mean, you're there.
I guess my comment is that we're all experts in our particular fields. And I'm not an expert at WIC Tech as a transportation planner on Lyft or Uber or TNCs, and I don't think anyone is yet. So I went to a conference workshop on Monday and Mallory, I think Lori was there, some of the people at a lot of Alameda County, because it was done through ACTC's PAPCO. And a big TRB academic report was created called Partnerships Between Transit Agencies and Transportation Network Companies. And they surveyed 20 nationwide programs. And all of those programs were slightly different with a little bit of spin and a little bit of detail or a little bit of trim. On how they served their community using Uber and Lyft. And I'll just say Uber and Lyft because I guess there's 14 or 15 different ones in the Bay Area, but the Uber and Lyft is the standard term. What we learned was, it's a moving target, it's a game changer. That was the best word I heard. It's a game changer in who and how we do this. And if there's future monies, yes, probably we'll be doing this and not just Richmond. I think Lafayette has a similar program, or not a similar, a different program, different flavor, as does City of Walnut Creek. And that's and Tri Delta. I think there's a lot of good learning already out there, but as Richmond moves along, they are still a test subject. And pretty much everyone puts this under a demo program. No one's saying this is absolutely how we're doing it. They're saying this is how we're doing it and that after a year, we evaluated and we made these tweaks and then we got some new money and then we did this. So it's all unfolding. That said, I think the things that I did hear pretty clearly were the issue of unbanked riders, probably more your low-income resident. Trying to serve that population without requiring them to have a credit card or a debit card. And then serving the population that doesn't use cell phone, or doesn't use, maybe they don't use a cell phone, but they don't use a smartphone with apps. And that's sometimes an overlap with low income and sometimes it's just a completely different group. And sometimes often it is the disability that defines whether or not they can use that app. So having choices and making it equitable and rolling it out so that you can serve the greatest number of people. And that's limited by dollars. But these subsidized programs are great because most of us who use Uber and Lyft know that it can get expensive. It is expensive. I mean, it's a higher cost than a transit trip. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Then there's this whole new thing of where a five cent surcharge is going to be placed on every trip. And that money's going to go into wheelchair accessible vehicles. And whether Lyft or Uber or any of those TNCs are going to be able to become those vehicles is a whole debate. And the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, is just now reviewing that. But there's going to be a new pot of money. And that pot of money, hopefully, in 2020 or sometime after that, is going to be available to fill that gap for people with wheelchairs, define wheelchair, or mobility device that can't use a standard Uber or Lyft TNC. So that's what I'm learning. Thought I'd share it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so we were in the middle of your report, Lori. Do you have anything else?
I had concluded and I thank you very much, everyone, for all your comments and we will ensure that we update this to reflect that.
Thank you. And we'll, hopefully we'll be able to have the meeting on the. 17th, yeah, of June, and, which will be, I guess, dependent upon the other two people on the subcommittee on this topic being able to come, and how, how soon do you think you might be able to contact them, Peter, or Fifi? Okay, thank you. Today's Wednesday? Right, okay, so, moving on in our agenda then, thank you. Okay, the next item is the approval of the Richmond's fiscal year 18, 19, and fiscal year 1920. That's the item. Oh, sorry, okay. So we, there's a series of action items. Future agenda items we could do, right?
We can do, we can do starting from nine, those are all just informational reports.
Okay, so on nine, the Service Review Advisory Committee report. We actually had a training on ethics instead of a meeting, so that, that was what we did. And it was a training between the Service Review Advisory Committee, the BART Accessibility Task Force, and the AC Transit Accessibility Advisory Committee. We're all in the same training, and I think that was the groups that were there. And so we all will be getting our little certificate, and our ethics training will be done for two years. I don't know if you want to add anything to that topic of ethics training, Peter, for anybody who wasn't-
I think Teri Ann did a presentation on that at the last PCC meeting. Oh, it was February, I guess, so she's the one that handles that for the agency, so if, I'll have her review everybody's situation with that as far as certifi- certification, and either she or Fifi can get out to everybody what, what they need to do. I think we were gonna, I think we were proposing online certifications. Do you remember?
Well-
Okay, yeah.
Fifi, if you could provide Kim a copy of this group's members, we could send you copies of their certificates that they have.
I remember.
Because like Janet is-
Got it, right.
Yeah.
What I can do is just go through what I have, compare it to the roster, and then I'll reach out to the individuals who haven't turned theirs in, and I'll give you instructions on how to obtain your certification.
Okay, but we may already have them.
Right, so if, if I reach out to you and I let you know that I don't physically have it and you have one available, you can forward that to me, or we can set you up in an online course. Yeah.
And vice, so it goes, that chain goes both ways, right?
Yeah, coordinate with Kim.
Yeah.
So mine, I, I did do a training, although it was at BART itself, for the Transit Security Advisory Committees, which is a committee I'm on. And so it has some date earlier in the year, and I just did the ethics one in person that I mentioned, and I'd rather use the date from the more recent one, because that makes it last longer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, Fifi will get hold of Kim, and we'll get Janet's most recent certification, so that's the longest, so that'll have the longest time period for she has to take in.
And anybody else?
Okay, so anybody, okay, all right.
And were you there, Bridgette? Okay. Anybody else from here? I think Mallory, were you there? Do, do you have the training?
I have to do it online, Janet, thank you.
Oh.
Raising the issue.
That's why I was doing it. We want to keep you legal. Just looking around to see who-
Don't worry, Fifi.
Go after her. Okay, so-
Laura was there, so.
Was anybody from San Pablo there doing that?
No. I, I don't think so. I can't remember. Okay, so no, I don't think there's anybody from San Pablo on that committee, is what it is. Okay, so the next report is item number 10. The Senior Mobility Action Council. Would you be doing that, Lisa?
I attend the SMAC meetings. We had one, I think it was this week. So the, the biggest thing that we're working on right now is we're planning for an, our next, I guess you'd call it a workshop, or a, we, we did it at the Rossmore Event Center for Emergency Preparedness. I can't even remember when it was. A number of months ago, and we had a lot of people in attendance, but because we had it in Rossmore, we had a lot of Rossmore people attending, so, so there's been a discussion about where to have it, how many people we want to have attend. We've pretty much got the, it's not going to be emergency preparedness this time. It's more on planning for the future, i.e. retirement, housing options, and those types of things. So we're working with the other Advisory Council on Aging subgroups, health, and there's several others that are providing input into what we're doing, and it's being planned for probably September of next year, 2020. We do these, we've been doing these workshops every other year, so, and it's, it's a big, it's a big thing to organize by a group of just volunteers. So it's really good that we're getting help from the other Advisory Council on Aging subgroups, but I think it'll be good and interesting, and so the next meeting, we're going to finalize the, the venue, how many people we're going to have, and hopefully some of the speakers, the time, you know, the time. It's probably, it's most of the day, it's something like 9:30 to 3:00, something like that. So I'll have more information as we get closer and when we have it planned out, but that's what we've been talking about. And then we also, because it's mobility, we're interested in the Accessible Transportation Strategic Plan that the county and CCA are working on, and also on the Transportation Expenditure Plan that's coming up. So, that's it.
Any questions on this one? Okay, not seeing any. We will move on. Future agenda items, we can do this one, can't we? Okay, are there any items?
Well, I think the key ones will be our approval of our claim forms.
For, this will be for all claim forms?
Yeah.
Because we haven't got-
Yeah, so we should have Richmond's, and then we'll, and then all the rest, and then El Cerrito, we saw today, and the rest were reviewed last time, so we should be, hopefully, be able to get them all in. I talked to Lisa, maybe just to add to more onto that agenda. Choice in Aging is going to do a pilot, I think, along with County Connection to provide, well, I don't know a lot, but anyway, they're doing a special pilot, and they're going to use Silver Rides, and so I asked Lisa if they would be in a position to maybe, we could put that on the agenda, and she could talk a little bit about it.
And what did Lisa say about doing that?
I said, "We're only going to start at June 1st, but we've, we've done a lot of work leading up to actually starting it, and we will be doing some rides starting June 1st." It's a pilot program, it's just, it's a dozen of our participants who, well, there's a number of criteria, I can go into it later, but yes, I can come and give an update on how, how we got to this point, what our planning process was, and agreements that we had to get in place, how we chose the participants that were going to participate in the pilot, and, sure.
Okay. Anything else, any other future agenda items?
Well, we have a few items on here that we couldn't get to. We've had two people drop off the PCC. Remind me who they are. Oh yeah, Bill Trin and Sharon. Sharon was the vice chair. So you'll see on here, we need to reelect a new vice chair, and I think you got an email from Michael, but since we can't take, since we can't take action, we will, you know, just deal with that.
I actually read it, but I'll read it again in case somebody came in. I don't think anyone came in after I read it, but, except maybe Peter. Okay, it says, "Although I am not able to attend either the subcommittee or the special PCC meeting today, I would like to put into writing for the PC's meeting, PCC meeting, that I will accept a nomination for vice chair, and would also like to continue as a PCC member for another term. Signed, Michael." I don't know how to pronounce this. Dill? Dow? Jelly? Dow, okay, I, I think I see how it works. Dow Jelly, okay. I'm glad he's not here to hear me. Okay, and Joanna, did you have something?
As I mentioned, and Lisa, I think you were saying the SMAC's looking at the TEP. I think that would be a good thing to have on the agenda if it's ready or if there's discussion, because part of that TEP proposal is to put more money towards senior and disabled funding for transportation, so I think that's a good one. I need to speak. So, that's what my mom said. So travel training update, we will probably have more information and better information in September, so I would like to hold off and not fill up your agenda.
What we would like to do is fill up the room with members of the committee, so we can pass some things, yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, any news, any news to share?
I would just say, we're in, AC Transit won the International Bus Road Dayo Driver and Mechanics. Out of 80 different teams, 37 agencies, number one, best of the best.
That's great. So in the world, huh? Great. Oh, it just happened?
Yeah. Just now, 115, we got the word.
Oh, wow, hot off the press. Okay, let's see here. Any other news to share? So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Sorry we didn't have action items. But thank you all for being here, because one more person, we would have had the ability to do that. Oh, I wonder if we want to add one more item to the agenda, which would be looking for new members of the PCC, but, you know, the- especially the riders, what? Oh, great, what category?
I'm working on someone right now.
Oh, you're, you're working on, okay.
Yeah, East County.
Did, I thought I heard you say Janet, though. Deanna, okay, I just didn't hear right. Okay, thank you all. Have a good week.